Mrs. Peak, would you like to bring us out of closed session, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The council has reconvened from closed session during which it discussed the Affordable Housing Coalition of San Diego versus numerous defendants, including the Successor Agency and the City of San Diego Superior Court Case Sacramento, case number thirty-four two twelve eight thousand eleven fifty-eight. The city council discussed the matter and provided unanimous direction to the city attorney, and no reportable action was taken. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, the special meeting is adjourned, and then we will open up our new meeting, our regular meeting for May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and if you could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you could please remain standing, we have an invocation from Father Frank Bunez with the League of Episcopal.
Thank you, and thank you for the privilege of praying the invocation tonight. Whatever your religious persuasion and background, let us take a moment together to invite the Spirit of God to be present. One of my earnest hopes is that Almighty God might have a hand in the development of this community. Let us pray. God, the source of all wisdom and understanding, be present with those who take counsel tonight. Guide us to perceive what is right, grant us the courage to pursue it, and the grace to accomplish it. We thank you, Lord, for the land and all the things you have created. We thank you especially for creating this beautiful part of the earth which we call home, San Marcos. Help us to be good stewards of it. Yet more importantly, we thank you for each other. We pray that you will help us to learn to be the kind of people for which we were created, being mindful of the needs of others, to be patient, fair, and tolerant in our views and convictions, in all our discussions and deliberations. May we here in San Marcos be an example to others as we live together in freedom, creating a spirit of brother and sisterhood among peoples of different backgrounds. May the American dream exist here and now and forever. And now, Lord, bless this gathering. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. All right, you may be seated. Next up is a roll call. Mr. Scalick.
Councilmember Musgrove?
Present.
Councilmember Nunez?
Present.
Councilmember Walton?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Jenkins?
Here.
And Mayor Jones?
Here. Okay, moving on to proclamations and presentations, we have the San Diego County Fair Association.
They canceled.
Oh, they did?
Yeah, they weren't able to make it tonight.
They didn't want to tell us all about the fun that's going to be happening?
Yeah, they had too many commitments and overbooked.
Okay, well, then, we now will be moving on to the Land Use Alternatives Report introduction. Who's going to be presenting tonight?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor Jones, council members. We have Amanda Tropiano from De novo, and she'll be discussing our next step in the general plan update process, our land use alternative mapping.
Great.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and council members. Thank you for having me back today. I have a brief presentation and excited to share with you our next phase of work, looking specifically at the land use alternatives as part of your general plan update. I'll be providing an update on the overall project schedule, spending a few moments talking specifically about the land use alternatives report and the process that we'll be going through to review that with the public, the Planning Commission, and the council over the next few weeks, and then where we're headed from there. So this is an update of the schedule that was provided at your prior briefing. Moving forward in the work program, we are, in the spring of two thousand twenty-two, focused on circulating the Land Use Alternatives Report for public review and comment, and working with the community to arrive at a land use map that will serve as the foundation for our policy document and environmental review. So we'll be working closely with you in the coming months to move forward with that work program, again, in accordance with the overall project schedule. Speaking specifically to the Land Use Alternatives Report, this is, in fact, a kind of cover-to-cover document that we have prepared to assist the community, property owners, your general plan advisory committee, your planning commission, and yourselves, with really understanding different visions for how San Marcos may accommodate, grow, change over time. This itself is a tool. It is not a policy document. It is not setting direction for how the city will definitely change. It's an effort to memorialize different ideas and discuss those so that we can have an informed conversation about what you'd like to see represented in that updated land use map that will serve as the cornerstone for the policy document and environmental review. To help facilitate that conversation, we've prepared a report that includes three potential maps that describe different types of distribution of land uses in San Marcos. The first is your current general plan. This is what is currently adopted with some minor modifications to the land use designations. You might consider this as your business-as-usual approach. And then we've proposed two different alternatives to that current map, born out of that public process through the visioning workshops, input from your general plan advisory committee, and from your property owner requests, that set forward some ideas about how areas might transition into new uses over the next ten or twenty years. And so we've called those alternatives one and two, and you'll be kind of comparing those against your current or business-as-usual map. To help provide some parameters for this discussion, the report also includes an assessment of how those maps would play out in terms of total population or housing unit growth, the number of jobs that might be expected, the fiscal implications of those alternatives, how they might impact traffic or mobility, and how they may impact your infrastructure. Again, these maps are really developed from the ground up, starting first with the input from the visioning workshops. Those were summarized and shared with you at my prior briefing. Impact from the general plan advisory committee in regards to areas of the city that warranted this special attention or focus land use change, the consideration of the dozen or so requests submitted by property owners to be considered as part of this planning process, your own priorities, and the best practices, really, from the staff and your consultant team in terms of modernizing, streamlining, and making a very effective land use map and planning program. We also have made some recommended changes to some of your existing land use designations, particularly to streamline some of those designations and provide more consolidated and implementable direction. Some of the uses, some of the designations currently in use are working really well, and there's no reason to make modifications or change those. But there are some that could be improved upon as you look to update your general plan, and this was really informed also from those property owner requests, where some certain property owners had trouble implementing some ideas of the prior plan. We've made some recommendations on how to modernize that and better set the vision going forward. We've also included a number of new designations to allow for a mix of complementary uses, as well as a series of designations that we're calling transitional, which is really recognizing that some areas of the community, as they age over time, may start to transition to new types of uses, and how would those types of uses complement each other as they come closer together. The council's role in this process is to become familiar with the concepts presented in the Land Use Alternatives Report and start to decide which of those concepts from each of the maps, or based on the results of those implication analyses, you feel best represent the future for San Marcos. And to consider how the public process, the property owner input, and the input that we'll receive from the community in sharing these alternatives over the next few weeks helps really reflect that overall community vision of where you'd like to head, where you'd like to head. And then ultimately, be ready to discuss what parts of those maps or ideas you think should be reflected in that preferred land use map that we'll go ahead and start studying, or areas that you think we might want to reflect differently in that preferred map that maybe are not included in one of the alternatives you've seen. So you can think of it as a bit of a Frankenstein exercise, where there may be pieces of each of those maps or alternatives that you think are working really well, and you want to assemble them together into one final map. That's where we're headed. For the next several weeks, we'll be facilitating a public process to hear from your community members some of the same ideas I just posed to you, which parts of the alternatives resonate with them and reflect their vision for the future of the community, and which areas might they like to see reflected a little differently. To facilitate that, we will have an online survey available in English and Spanish to ask for general feedback on the alternatives, as well as any parcel-specific information that a resident or community member might like to share. We'll be facilitating a workshop with the Planning Commission on June seventh, and then on the eighth and ninth of June, we'll be hosting two community open houses, the first on the eighth at the Senior Center, and the second on the ninth at the Community Center. These are available opportunities for the public to learn about the process, learn how their input can help inform this effort, and provide their input so that we can share it with you and with the general plan advisory committee at a joint meeting on June sixteenth. Based on the feedback that you provide at that meeting on the sixteenth, the consultant team and staff will work to assemble a draft of that consolidated or preferred map that will be brought back to you for your consideration and direction before we move forward with developing the policy document and environmental review. So with that, that concludes my briefing for this evening, and I certainly appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you so much for that presentation. Does the council have any questions? Councilmember Walton?
Thank you. Thank you for this. This is excellent, by the way, and I look forward to researching and then coming to the meeting informed. How are we promoting these community open houses? And are we going to be... Well, why don't you answer that question, and I'll see if there's a follow-up.
Good evening. We produced a bilingual flyer that we distributed at the street fair in the spring, and we've had it available here at City Hall at the public counter and at the information desk to hand out. We're also going to be attending the farmer's market next week, Trails Day on June fourth as well. A press release is going to be distributed tomorrow with this information, as well as social media posts. And obviously, anybody that signed up for the e-notifications as part of the general plan update will automatically receive notifications several times in the next couple of weeks regarding the open houses.
And do the materials explain in lay terms what a general plan is and what this means, so people, you know, so people don't get, you know, bored by the thought and think, wow, this is pretty exciting if you think about it?
I sure hope so. Yes, we have worked to share the information in a way we hope is digestible for the public to understand how this impacts their life and opportunities for them to provide input. We've had success in educating your community on the general plan and the process through those visioning workshops and online surveys, and we've had very strong responses to those. So we hope that it's presented in a way that the average person can certainly understand and provide input on, and we were excited to be able to host opportunities both online and in person for that feedback so that a member can decide the avenue that's most appropriate for them.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Musgrove?
You did a fantastic job. I don't think you looked down at your notes one time, so I commend you for that. But one of the comments you made about offering us opportunities as time goes on and we may need to make adjustments, are we looking at options that don't tend to conform to normal zoning guidelines in this mapping process?
We are looking at land use designations that could conform to traditional zoning, in that the zoning could be customized to reflect the new land use designation. So it might not be a zone that you have in existence in San Marcos right now, but it is something that is commonplace or best practice. So the project itself, the general plan update project and the team that I'm working on, is through, is working with you through the focused update to your development code as well. So this is a soup-to-nuts process. So if there are any recommended changes from the land use map that necessitate changes in your development code, that's all part of this umbrella project.
Fantastic. Look forward to it. Thank you.
And just to follow up on that, so we have found that our mixed-use areas are very difficult to actually develop in a meaningful way, and one of the things that I actually thought we were doing during our last update was having more of a floor-area ratio, kind of flex, a little bit more flexible sort of zoning. And so I'm wondering if that's going to be incorporated into this general plan update?
Yes, absolutely. That's some of the feedback we've heard, both from yourself and from your staff, and administering this general plan is an objective to resolve through this process.
And are we continuing to receive feedback from property owners saying, okay, well, I mean, we want to be able to develop our property, but we're not able, we need a small tweak, because it is very expensive to actually go through a general plan amendment. So in the update, are we continuing to take in feedback? Are we still receiving feedback? I'm not sure if we are or we aren't.
So we're certainly still receiving feedback. We do hope that by the city electing to distribute that direct mailer to all addresses in San Marcos, that if a property owner did have a request to make, we hope that that was submitted as part of that process at the end of last year.
Perfect. Okay. Yeah, that's what I was wondering, and so I'm glad we're still moving forward with that. Okay, any other questions from council? Yes, council member or deputy mayor, sorry.
I think Mayor actually touched on this. It seems to me, I've not gone through this process, only one person up here has, but it would seem to me, in simplistic terms, the more flexible we can make this, the better. So that if a property is not developing under one specific zoning situation, that if there's some flexibility overlay or something, so that it doesn't take years or decades for somebody to do something with their property, because it only helps our community if we can get some of this taken care of this way.
Absolutely, and we hope that the introduction of these new transitional uses that are described in the report, we've also included some imagery to support what those areas might look like as they change over time, helps address some of those ideas.
Okay, thank you. And as I understand it, it creates more certainty in what the actual building will look like and less about the exact interior of the building.
There are lots of ways we can address that, and as we go through this, we'll certainly take that into account and make sure that we're focusing on that flexibility, being able to respond to changing market conditions, and allowing property owners to find the best use for their property in an efficient and streamlined way.
Perfect, thanks. Councilmember Nunez?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for this. For our monolingual speakers, primarily our Spanish speakers in the city that are looking to get up to speed where we're at, and it looks like, based on what I see, where we're going, so what's available to our Spanish-speaking residents that, what resources, where do they go, who do they call, who do they talk to to get information that's in Spanish?
I think both Beth and I will answer this, so I'll take the first part and let her follow up. So all of the material available for public feedback is available both in English and Spanish. The surveys are professionally translated and available on the website. We also have provided Spanish language interpretation at all public workshops, including our general plan advisory committees, and we'll have our interpreter available at both of the workshops as well.
And are those recorded?
We're not recording like video recordings? We're documenting like via note, like meeting notes.
And so those are also available in Spanish?
We can prepare a summary that includes a summary in Spanish. We did that for the community visioning workshops as well. That executive summary is provided both in English and Spanish, and again, summarizing those high-level topics that were provided at those workshops. That's available on the website and in hard copy as well.
Okay, and those are available in Spanish today?
That is available in Spanish today.
Okay. And then I do see that the survey that we have that's going live, it looks like today, or is that already live?
It'll be live tomorrow morning.
Oh, okay, since the twenty-fourth.
We have it available, but the press release will be released tomorrow morning, so it is available, but no one knows about it unless they're watching this meeting, I suppose.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And I'm sorry, I missed, so then for then the dates that I see here for the upcoming activities, so what will be available in Spanish?
The, both of the community open houses held on June eighth and ninth will be available in Spanish. The online survey that will run from today through June tenth, those are two separate surveys, both available in English and in Spanish, and we'll have our interpreter available at the joint GPAC and City Council meeting as well. And then your feedback is well appreciated. As we get that feedback and summarize it, we'll ensure that any summary of that also is provided in a bilingual fashion, consistent with our visioning workshops as well.
Okay. And can you remind me, do we have a dedicated website for the general plan update?
We do, generalplan.sanmarcos.org.
And so what does the Spanish look like? Is it a separate website, or is it side-by-side?
It's the same website. It translates, the program that we use will translate the material. We have prepared the surveys, though, as a dedicated professionally translated option. On the top of the, we use Survey Monkey, on the top right-hand corner, there's an opportunity to select your language that you'd like to take the survey in. You can select English or Spanish for that.
Do we have any other languages, options for the survey?
You can have any, the survey would automatically translate into, like using a Google Translate type of feature, to any other language of the person's choosing, but the professional verified translation is in Spanish as well.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Okay, all right. Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for all the hard work. I know it's a big undertaking, and we're happy to see it moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll see you in a few weeks.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar, we, do we have a motion to approve, or any items that any council members wish to pull?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to pull item number nine.
Okay, item number nine. Any other items that any council members wish to approve? Do I have a motion to approve the balance?
Motion to approve the balance.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, item number nine, Councilmember Walton.
Thank you. Jack, I was just curious, this is the legislative report, and I was, and I was reading through some of the letters that we're sending out, taking positions on legislation, and my sense was that some of this stuff felt kind of important, and it represents the opinion of the entire city, I presume. Is that correct?
Assuming the council votes that way.
So is there, just maybe you could do a recap on how we get to these positions that we're taking, and then I've got one specifically that I want to talk about.
I mean, I think generally the city council in the beginning of the year adopts a legislative platform, which sort of lays out the overarching goals of the city in terms of what it looks for or what it considers as legislation comes forward. April is the month when all the bills sort of rise up out of Sacramento. We work with the League of Cities, CalCities. These letters were all essentially drafted by CalCities, and we're following the recommendations that CalCities provided in every one of these. We work with our government liaison firm up in, up in Sacramento. They make recommendations to us. So we usually don't put any of these kinds of letters in the packet for your formal unless it's sort of very much dials into the overall arching legislative platform. And in case of almost, I think, every one of these, it's mostly about a local control, so it's not necessarily maybe the substance of the particular issue. It's that the state in these bills is essentially saying, city shall do this, or you can't do that, as opposed to whether the city would want to do that on its own. So some of these, it's not so much the merits of the, maybe the underlying decision that the state might be making or the bill would be contemplating, but the fact that they're saying, as a city, you don't really have a, we're not giving you the right to make that decision. So every one of these is really a local control issue, which is a very much of an underpinning element of the legislative platform that the council approved.
Okay. One that caught my attention was this Senate Bill eleven eighty-six by Senator Weiner, having to do with, if I understand it correctly, it prohibits cities from preventing the delivery of cannabis for medicinal purposes. And I wonder, the current state of our law here is that we prohibit, obviously, we prohibit retail sales, but we also prohibit deliveries. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And do we have any evidence, any examples of how we've actually prevented a delivery? Is that being enforced in any meaningful way that we're aware of?
Not that we're aware of. It's very difficult to enforce, and that the delivery doesn't, isn't a marked vehicle, so you wouldn't really know. So I would, the level of enforcement would likely be incidental to some other issue that arisen with respect to that delivery. So if a person, for whatever reason, ran afoul of the sheriff, and for some other reason, that would have been how enforcement may occur on a case, but I'm not aware. of any of those kinds of cases that have come forward.
We have had one notice violation issued for a delivery. It came out in the context of something else, I think. And that was one of the lesser included offenses. And the, the person who was cited claimed that the Bureau of Cannabis Control regulations superseded those of the city. And we noted that the Bureau of Cannabis Control had participated in a case that the County of Santa Cruz brought against the Bureau of Cannabis Control, and the state arguing that it was superseding the authority that was granted by Prop 64 in prohibiting local agencies from prohibiting deliveries. And the Bureau of Cannabis Control in that case took the position that the regulations that it engendered affected licensee conduct, conduct only, and not those of the local jurisdictions, and that local jurisdictions were not preempted or prohibited from precluding deliveries in their jurisdictions. So that's the latest case of which we are aware, and that decision came down in the trial court in 2021, and the case was later dismissed. We're not aware of any appellate ruling to the contrary.
As a city, though, do we take any affirmative action to try to prevent deliveries of cannabis products medicinal to our residents? Is there anything that we do?
No.
Okay. Okay. Thanks for the clarification. That's all.
Would you like to approve it?
Sure. I'll move to approve item number nine.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And I do have to bring back item number four, even though we approved them all together. I do, we do have one public speaker on item number four, Marlene Walder. So I'd like to make a motion to approve everything but item number four, because I have to bring it back for reconsideration. I'm assuming that would be the correct way to bring it back, Mrs. Speaker?
It would be a motion to reconsider.
Just item number?
The approval of all items other than?
Yes.
Just oral comment and not?
It says item number four under agenda item, and then Skylark, which I looked it up, which is why I brought it back. Sorry, it's okay. I looked, because I saw oral communications, and then I looked, and I went, well, I might be wrong on that. So, so just item number four, I just bring that back, and we don't have to vote on the balance at this time? Mrs. Speaker?
Well, the motion was to approve everything other than nine. So if you're taking, if you're moving to reconsider, you reconsider that item, then you approve anything other than four and nine, and then, and then you can come back and consider four.
That's what I was doing. Okay, I was doing it right. Perfect. All right. So then my motion would be to approve the balance except item number four and item number nine, which we already?
No, first is the motion to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider. Oh, we have to vote on that? Sorry.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, then I make a motion to approve the balance outside of item number nine and item number four. And that's my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, item number four, Marlene Walder, come on down. Sorry, we thought you were under regular oral communication, so no problem.
No, I just had a question that I did not hear the last time when Skylark was here. It was, does the pool have access to extra parking? That was my only question.
Does staff have that answer?
I'm not sure that we're talking about the same Skylark. I don't think this is the project you think it is.
Oh, it's not the one by Barha?
No, it's not.
No.
Sorry about all that.
Okay, all right. Okay, this is in a different location in the city. Okay, I make a motion to approve. Do I get a second? Or do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Now we'll be moving on to oral communications, which we have none.
Do we have to approve nine again?
We already approved nine.
Okay.
Yeah. Yep. Nope, we're good. And then ordinances, item number 12, ordinance 2022-1516, amend the California Public Employees Retirement System contract for all employee groups.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Very briefly, this item reflects the existing memorandum of understanding we have, or agreement we have with our bargaining units regarding their increasing employee share of their CalPERS retirement costs. We're required to do that each year whenever there's a change, and so that's what this item is. And you'll see these whenever we have that built into our contracts. The net result of this is the employee's share of their pension costs, their picking up goes up a little bit, which helps defray the growth of the cost on the city side.
Okay. And that's an ordinance. Do we have any questions of staff? This is something we do every year, based on the MOU. Any questions or a motion? I'll make a motion to approve? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any notes? Okay, motion passes. Moving on to oral communications, we have no more. Moving on to reports, we have Sandag. Okay. At our last meeting, which was May 13th, seems like so long ago, we had a few things that we discussed. One was the continuation of teleconferencing and hybrid meetings, which is still moving forward. We are going to be doing that. And then we have active transportation, regional call for projects, which we went ahead and moved forward with that. And then Transnet Smart Growth Incentive Program funding recommendations, which we did receive the information on that. Policy Advisory Committee meetings, the big discussion was really the central mobility hub, which, if you all recall, you may or may not, we were originally discussing Navoar, and that has now been passed on, although we never really voted on it, but that we're not considering anymore. But now we're talking about something in downtown, which there's a lot of discussion on that. A lot of money has already been spent to date, right around $20 million, and it's, we don't have anything yet as far as location yet. So we're going to be looking at a couple of other different things. One of them is a property that will, that the city of San Diego was also looking, they're, they're looking at putting together a few different properties, assembling, and having a location right next near to the 101 Ash, including the 101 Ash property, which, as we all know, is a big issue with that property because it's got asbestos issues. And one of the things that I brought up is that we want to make sure that Sandag is not going to be taking on a big project like that where we'll be wasting taxpayer dollars for the remediation of a property. And so I wanted to have our discussion, our, the comments on the record for that, because that's, I've heard upwards of possibly right, right around $1 billion to actually remediate that one piece of property. And we certainly don't want to use taxpayer dollars for that, where we are, where we're kind of a third party in this. And then we also talked about the Regional Equitable Housing Subcommittee. And one of the things that I brought up is we want to make sure that we retain local control, because we're always talking about this, it's part of our legislative platform. And it's very, I mean, I certainly want to find out a way to discuss how we're going to pay for affordable housing, but I certainly don't want to form an agency, which is one of the things that is moving forward with Ben Huaso's introduced SB 1105. There is some discussion that there will be member agencies much like Sandag, and I certainly don't want to have San Marcos not have an opportunity to actually receive some of those funds. There's one line item in that legislation that is very concerning to me, and that actually is, it talks about if one, if one of the member agencies meets certain criteria, that all of the money could go to one agency. And so much like when we talk about at Sandag, not getting our fair share of tax dollars, because this would be tax dollars that they would be setting up another taxing agency with this housing authority. I certainly don't want that to be something that happens with our, our city. So I'll be fighting for that, to make sure that that doesn't end up happening. But it remains to be seen what will actually happen with that. And on a side note, it didn't happen at Sandag. I think maybe I'll talk about that in commentary. But I did meet with the governor's office with Jack yesterday, and I'll talk about that a little bit later, about housing and homeless and all of that. So anyway, that's it for my report. Moving on to League of California Cities, Councilmember Nunez.
Thank you, Mayor. No report. We don't have a meeting until next month, and so we'll have a report at our next council meeting. I do want to mention, though, the item the Councilmember Walton pulled out, our position on the bills. I do like that we have specified the Cal Cities position. I think that's really helpful to reconcile that. So thank you, city, for doing that, city staff. No report.
Okay. North County Transit District, Deputy Mayor Jenkins.
Yes, I have just a couple items to report on. We are in the process of doing some market research and analysis with a consultant who's going to help us figure out how to recover some of the ridership. You know, COVID's had a huge impact, as we know, and so we'll be working on some analysis of that, and I believe it's going to come back in September. The other big topic was the budget for the upcoming year. We will have a balanced budget. It's required. We have a balanced budget, and we will. We're continuing to look at inflation. We have labor shortages, as you know, and higher energy costs. But we do have a balanced budget, and we budget conservatively. So if the economy changes, we'll be in a better position should that occur. And then the last main thing is, we have grant application out for low or no emission buses. We're requesting about $51 million to procure 42 hydrogen-fuel cell electric buses. And eventually, the entire Breeze fleet that you see on the, on the street will be zero emission buses. So we're working towards that goal and trying to get grant money as much as possible. So those were the three main items of the meeting.
I have a question on that. Hydrogen-fuel cell buses, and where would they renew them? I guess that would be the right term.
So, part of our money we're receiving is also for the, for the fueling stations and all that. So that's, it's, that's different.
And yeah.
But yes, because it's not just the cost of the bus, it's everything else that goes with it. So they're, they are working on that.
And those would be just for the buses, or would they be also joint open to the public?
This money is for the buses.
Okay. Well, the only reason I ask is I had a resident reach out to me, and they're like, well, I'm trying to do the right thing to buy an alternative fuel vehicle, and I really want to get a hydrogen car, but there's only one place to actually fill it, and it's all the way in Del Mar or something like that. I think there's only one in the county. And so I was like, oh, we're trying to do more electric, although we haven't really talked about hydrogen. So maybe at some point, I can have that discussion at Sandag, but I just thought about it when you brought that up. So anyway, I, I think when we start adding more things to the actual, you know, fueling, alternative fueling, that will help people move over. So anyway, thank you. And then moving on to North County Dispatch, Councilmember Walton.
We meet tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning?
Tomorrow morning.
Okay. Clean Energy Alliance report, Councilmember Musgrove.
We meet Thursday.
What? Okay, well, Sandag, I forgot to mention, we're meeting Thursday for team building and Friday. So I get two days this week that I will be having Sandag meetings. City Council Business Visits, we had one today. I don't know if, were there any more of the previous week? I don't know.
I don't believe so. I think that was it.
No? Is that, is that the notes?
Those are the notes.
Okay, well, it was pretty amazing. Councilmember Musgrove and I went to California All-Stars, which was the cheer gym, right here in San Marcos. Look at how big it is. It's over 20,000 square feet, but they are at a very, very high competitive level. They have, when you walk in, I don't know if we have that picture, but there is a ton. Oh, this is the observing, observance area for the parents, so they can watch the kids. There are four, oh, that's, that's actually all of their awards. Well, that's actually a fraction of their awards. There are so many. I think there's more pictures. Anyway, it's a beautiful facility. They just opened during COVID, but kind of a fun fact, they opened over 20 years ago, here in the city, over on Rancheros, right?
Yes.
Yeah, Rancheros. Anyway, so during COVID, they took the time, and they actually built this gym. It's right there on Twin Oaks Valley Road. And they have lots of parking. It's a great location, and it brings a lot of people from all over, San Diego County, all over San Diego County, Riverside, and then Orange County. And then, kind of a fun fact, which I had no idea, it's almost like an exchange student sort of thing, where folks come from, or students or athletes come from all over the country, and they stay with a family for up to a year, and they go to school here, and they actually are at the cheer gym. And it's highly competitive. I think I did mention that. I know several residents within the community that have their kids that are athletes there, and it is unbelievable what they go through. It's quite rigorous, but it really teaches them a lot of life skills that are very important about sticking with something, really giving it your all. And anyway, this is lovely pictures, by the way, Councilmember Musgrove. Anyway, so Michelle Bender and Tess and I, and then Councilmember Musgrove, of course, there we are, with the owner, and her name is Tanra, Taraz, Imanjay?
I'll get it.
It's right there at the top.
I wrote it.
I left you all those, all those notes.
Tanaz, Imam Jome, Imam Jome.
Imam Jome.
Yes.
Anyway, and then Adam, that's Adam. He's her site manager. He actually has some other different, I don't, I forget what his, he had, he had more to his title. But anyway, he also is a, an actual coach there, too. But anyway, they open at four o'clock, I think, on weekdays, and then they're open until what, 9:30? Was it 9:30?
9:30.
Yeah, 9:30 for some of the older athletes. But anyway, it was a really cool thing, and I'll let you.
Sure. They, they're not open on weekends, except in September to April, they do open on Saturdays, and they're open all day long. They have, some of the rooms you saw, of course, is the second floor observation room for the parents to watch the kids, so they can sit and relax. That room right there is the, okay, well, that room right there. That one, that room.
We keep going back.
There are, there are three separate rooms that they have set up. That one right there is for video review. So if anyone, quite honestly, if they want to see how well they're doing, or they have a coach that wants to highlight some of the positives or negatives, they go into that room, and they pull the video up, and they can watch it in some privacy. Some of the other rooms, one is a staff lounge, the most, that's a staff lounge. The most impressive room, if you go one more, I believe.
Student room.
One more. That one right there is set up for the students. So when they're finished, if they're waiting for mom, dad, or their coach, or whomever to come by and pick them up, they have a place to sit, relax, they can watch TV, they can discuss, hey, this is what we did, this is what we liked. And just off the top of Adam's head, they currently have students enrolled from Japan, was it Guatemala, Mexico? And they do, they, they have a program. So when you have families that have their students, that are their kids, that are coming here for competitive cheer, they make arrangements for them to stay with them. And a lot of their students, and this company's been around since 2001, they go on to get scholarships. Louisville University of Kentucky, Baylor University, some locally at San Diego State, Cal State San Marcos.
Palmar.
Palmar College. They get scholarships to go there for the competitive cheer program. And they, some of those trophies you saw, there's so many of them, it's almost, well, okay, what are these really? These are, these are, these are national titles. So this is, this company's been around, again, for almost 21 years now, and they just are at the highest level. We talked to one of the parents who was there, Cheddar Tanner, her 13-year-old daughter's there, and they drive in from Escondido, which is not that far, but it's not uncommon to have them coming from one or two counties away, because the next closest facility they have is in Ontario, and then you work your way up the coast, Camarillo, the Bay Area, Las Vegas, and Mesa, Arizona. That's where they have their six operations. So you're going to get all of Southwest Riverside County, most of Orange, and all of San Diego County, and then coming up from Mexico.
It was impressive.
Yeah. Very nice.
Okay, anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay. San Marcos Creek Project, we had Nick. We had an exciting week last week.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, yeah, last week was a big week. We opened Bent Avenue and the Doc Burton Bridge last week, and congratulations to our staff and our contractors and all of the teams. We actually hit the May, or the spring 2022 target to get it open, so that was a good thing. And also thanks to our development partner, the Shaleon, our folks, and the next day we got the connection to Craven, so the sort of downtime and the sort of crazy traffic delay situation, we only had, only had to live with it for a day or so. So I think the important thing right now is Bent Avenue's open, and people can get from Bent Avenue to Craven, and so that's a major steps, you know, accomplishment within the project. What that means also is the Via Veracruz is now closed, and will be closed until spring of 2023, somewhere in there, when we finish the project. Also closed is Discovery between Applewild and Via Veracruz, so we do have a detour. That closure will be in, through, most of the summer, because we need to grade that up to get, to connect to the Discovery part that's been built on the section between Discovery, or between Via Veracruz and Bent, to get traffic onto it, so that we can finish Discovery. So we will have this sort of closure of Discovery for a few months here, but by, hopefully by fall, that'll be open, and Discovery will be back open all the way through. So that was all good stuff, and we'll start construction in, you know, a little bit more earnest on the park, that's the linear park along the creek, so you'll start to see that activity now ramping up in this phase of the project as well. So, it's all, all good news.
Does the habitat restoration start then, as well?
That's already started, and that continues, yes.
Yeah, I mean, you can tell they're doing something, I just wasn't sure when they actually start planting, because they pulled a lot out.
Yeah, so there's a planting season for those kinds of things, and so, but yeah, that, that activity is, is ongoing, and will be for a while.
Yeah, if you're walking on the bridge, and they're the, they're, I'm just going to say it, they're a little bit ugly, those little tiny thingsy.
I shouldn't have mentioned, we're open to vehicular traffic, we're not ready to be open to pedestrian traffic, because we don't have the connections on the other end, so.
So you'd have to go back?
Yes.
Okay.
You have to go back.
All right. Okay, and it was wonderful, it was wonderful to see city staff there, and it is, it's a huge milestone for our city, for sure, and then also that we had so many, we had two city managers there, kept past council members to all enjoy the milestone, very exciting to see that happen.
And Doc's family.
And Doc's family was there, which was exciting, his, his widow, and then also his, his kids, too, so everyone was there, it was a really great, a great day. Okay, moving on to council commentary, and I forgot to say one thing during the business visit, and that was planning went over and above to make that project open up, the California All-Stars. So anyway, I know Sean was really pushing and doing everything humanly possible, and I know that the business owners are very, very grateful for that, and we just really are so proud of our staff, and, I mean, I say this all the time, we have remarkable staff, but it's, it's true, when, when we hear things from the community about how over and above our staff goes, we really, really appreciate it, and it makes us so proud of you all, so, anyway, thank you for all that you do, definitely. Okay, council commentary, anyone have anything? Yes, Councilmember Walton.
Yeah, I thought it was important as a, as a part of the leadership of this city, of any community, to acknowledge the tragedy that happened today, and in fact, the two tragedies that have happened since we last met. Since, since, since we last met, over 30 people have been murdered in two shootings by 18-year-olds who have apparently purchased legally AR-15 weapons. And today, of course, we know it was, we were learning that it was 18 elementary school kids, and then, what, six, seven days ago, it was 10 or so African-American citizens. And, you know, it just highlights, it, it highlights what we all know in our hearts is true, that we, that we live in a country that makes available to people who should not have weapons that are this lethal too easily, and until we do something as a country to, to get serious about keeping weapons like this out of the hands of people who have used this weapon, which has been used in most mass shootings, that these shootings are going to continue, and that none of us are ever truly going to be safe. And the truth is, the, the only way this gets fixed is if leaders like us, but obviously those higher than us, but like us, take a position and, and, and say enough.
Thank you, Councilmember, and, you know, in my time on the city council, I am very proud that our city has always prioritized the safety of both our students and our teachers, and always invested in the School Resource Officers program, because it's very important to our community, that we do everything that we possibly can to keep our students and our teachers safe, and I, it is a tragedy when our kids are not safe to go to school, and we're not, I mean, we're losing them, it's just, it's heartbreaking, and as a mom, I mean, honestly, you don't even have to be a mom to have your heart broken, so, anyway, it's, why don't we have a moment of silence? Thank you for your words, Councilmember Walton. One other thing that I wanted to bring up is the Care Court, which is an initiative by Gavin Newsom's office, our governor, and he had, he's working on a program, or it's actually going through the legislature right now, to figure out how we can help our homeless. And so yesterday I met with, Jack and I met with some of his staff, and we talked a little bit about the homeless situation here, but we also talked about housing in general. That might have been just my thoughts and my ideas, I did, I did like, I said, "Well, I have you here in front of me, I, I'd like to talk about a couple of things." One of them is affordable housing, and our inability to actually get it built and do all we can as a city, being that we lost our redevelopment agency back in 2012. And so I did bring that up, it would be great to have more funding for affordable housing, the city doesn't actually build that affordable housing, but how is it possible that we could, you know, maybe get some, some dollars put toward that? But, anyway, and so we were talking about homeless, and, you know, we were talking about, you know, luckily, and I mean, it's, any person that's homeless is, it's heartbreaking, but we just got our point in time count, which is 12 here in the city. Our last point in time count was in 2020, and it was eight, I believe. Anyway, and so it has, it has increased, still, still very low, under 20, however, like I said, anyone that is not sheltered is, you know, a tragic situation. So we talked a little bit about what they're trying to do, and so they've got this initiative, it's a care court, and what it is, is to help people that are experiencing homelessness and helping them figure out how to voluntarily get them to buy into some of the initiatives, housing, and helping them with resources to get them off of the streets. And then, also, it has a component of it that also brings in conservatorship, which is if folks are unwell mentally, that they actually will be able to help them, because there's a conservatorship, a component of this that will actually, and, and Jack, if I, if I miss anything, please jump right in. And, anyway, so we talked a little bit about that, because I think based on the things that I've heard, many of our homeless in San Marcos of the 12 that we have are experiencing the, are experiencing drug addiction or mental health issues, and so we definitely, I, I even told them outright, I feel like we're, we're failing them, because we're not doing much for them as far as providing a space for them. If they are not able to sense that they are having issues, we're not, and, you know, it's a voluntary thing, what are we going to do with the folks that are, that truly need help but are unaware that they actually need help? And so there is this component of it, and so we talked a little bit about what those next steps might be. They, they are looking for support of the program. I'm in support of the program in concept, but I also, there is money that's allocated, but it will be allocated through the county, because the county is the one who actually provides those mental health services, and so I, I asked for some clarification, there is a draft letter that's going to be distributed, so I, my, my thought is, and they're asking the mayors to sign individually, my sense is that I probably will definitely, well, not probably, definitely, that doesn't make sense, I am likely to support that. I did ask for some clarification on a framework of what actually happens with our staff, and how they would be able to assist, because there are some things that we certainly don't have the expertise to administer as far as mental health and all of that. And then also I brought up the fact that, and actually, so did Michelle, Michelle Bender, actually, I think, brought it up originally, our Assistant City Manager, but what our discussion was, is, you know, right now, the county has this money already allocated to social workers to help with our, our homeless population and get the word out, and help them find housing and that sort of thing, but there is not enough workforce to actually do that. And so they talked about having money set aside specifically for education, and I said, "Great, it would be great to get you to the university, maybe to the San Marcos Promise, where you're talking to the, the high school students that are going to be graduating, and figuring out how to," and Palomar College also, "to figure out how to get them educated so we could actually roll out this program, so it could be a successful program." I'm not into having a program that looks great on paper, but it won't actually work because you don't have the workforce, so I said, you know, "We definitely would like to know more about that and how that would work." And then, did I miss anything? I don't know. Oh, and who actually is in charge of the conservatorship, and we had a lot of questions, which hopefully we'll be getting some answers to, but the concept in itself, I mean, certainly we're failing right now at homelessness, in my opinion, and so anything that we can do with a compassionate lens to actually get people that are unaware that they actually really need the help is a win in my, in my opinion, and, Jack, did I miss anything?
No, I mean, the only thing I would say is, is to, it's, it's, the Care Court's targeted at a very distinct part of the population, the folks with the worst mental impairments, so it's a fairly small subset of the total homeless issue, so just sort of, as people start to hear about it, not to, to pass judgment on it, it's not going to be, if it passes, people shouldn't have this expectation that, oh, all of a sudden that piece, you know, it's going to be, you know, that's going to disappear, it's, it's really not targeted at a very wide section of, of the population. And then the only other thing that we asked in terms of the cities is, just so that we have a clear understanding of what expectations will be put on cities for whatever it is that would might come out of it in terms of services, or assistance, or, or financial participation, or whatever, because we will be left with still a, a problem to try and help resolve, so, but I thought it was a real beneficial conversation, I think, you know, we learned a lot about the program, and see where it goes.
And now we have some local contacts, so we can continue to have the discussions as, as they evolve, because unfortunately, the homeless situation, I think, is very frustrating to all of us, and, you know, there's just a lot more that I think can happen, that we can do, we just need to have the right legislation, and the states, you know, backing us up in what we can do locally. So, anyway, with that, any other discussion? Okay, all right. That, this meeting is adjourned, thank you for coming.